Good evening, everyone. Could you please join me for the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abernathy.
Present.
Bush.
Here.
Buxton.
Present.
Doffin.
Here.
Leveque.
Here.
O'Connell.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Schoolnick.
Here.
Tedford Andrew. Tedford Jim.
Here.
Wendus.
Here.
And Winkler.
Here.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Citizens forum. Name and address. Which you already knew.
My address is Vernon, Connecticut. I don't have a specific address. Sometimes travel large because I'm homeless, but I think y'all know that already, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, for sure. Um, my name is Janelle. He's Alice, and I just want to say, um, rest in peace to my boy that got just killed, you know, and... But what I want to talk about is the town. I talked to a lot of people. A lot of people let me go through their stuff now. A lot of people get along with me, especially the old people. They don't see no change in this town, man. They saying it's the same crack every time. I'm just giving it to you. I'm just going to let you know what they tell me. They're leaning... A lot of people starting to see, like, it's like chess. You got to know how to play chess. If you can't play chess, you know, the pieces don't move right. Me personally, Matt helped me get birth certificates, but when it comes to, like, really helping people from the street, they ain't really no help there to help. Mr. Cox in Manchester from Y Center, he gave me thousands of dollars. That's how I got my apartment out here. Jay Moran and all them, they get, they, you know, with the town and all that because of catch-up and muscle. There's no bus passes. There should be bus passes. There's money for that. There is. I know there is. I don't even have to look through the books. I don't even want to waste my time. A lot of people out here need help. I find a lot of people at night. I found a what? I found a four-year-old boy at Henry Park around 4:30, 5 o'clock, maybe 6:00. I don't remember because I was crying because I found him by himself. I had to call the VPD. Did you hear about that, chief? There's a lot of more people doing a lot more out here, and they gonna need help. I go to the soup kitchen all the time. New faces every day. I argue with people. I can't argue with people up there in your yards looking through cans because there's a lot more canners now, and they got balls. I can't go to jail for y'all. I only go to jail if I see your kids getting hurt or a woman is trying to get raped, and I'm gonna go to jail for something that he will regret. But all I'm saying is, man, there's new people pulling up on us here. We're gonna need new people because we need the people that want to help people. And I'm gonna be honest, you know, and that's the way I'm looking at it, man. And I love y'all and I like y'all, man, because y'all took care of me, you know, and I'm not gonna complain about no police department because the police department, they... unbelievable work they do for me. They help me out a lot. I got my two boys back. My aunt bought me a $13,000 truck, brand new, right out of the lot, you know, here. She said, "Drive the boys everywhere." She's an multi-millionaire. She's rich. She got the money. She's good. Don't worry about it. She... That's a tax write-off donation. Boom, done. But we need, like with the Republicans, we need, you know, Republicans need a little bit more flavor, a little bit more merengue salsa with the people. Y'all don't got that. The Democrats, they got all that. They got the swag and the whole everything. That's why they multicultural up. And I get a lot of my people telling me, "Yo, man, we need to vote. Who do you think we should vote for?" Boom, 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 boom. Man, you been in this town longer than anybody, probably. You were a cop first. But all I'm saying is, man, I struggle every day. I drive every day. I go through people's blue recycle bins every day. My white... My truck is white. I have a pocket bully, so if she hops out because you scare me, I'm sorry. That's her duty. She's there to protect me. But I appreciate Vernon, Connecticut. Listen, and I'm gonna be really honest. I love y'all. People out here, yo, because y'all give me so many cans and let me go in your yard. It's unbelievable. I could buy food for my kids and stuff. My brother gave me money because he said, "Junie, I'm surprised you don't even sell crack no more because you're good at it." I said, "I don't want to do that no more." He said, "You're even smarter than the police department." I said, "I know I am." But I'm not trying to be slick, you know what I mean? But I'm being honest. That's hard. It's like a drug addict when he's on his heroin. It's hard for me not to sell drugs because I could make $50,000 in one week.
Right.
You know what I mean? It's hard. So people like me that need help, we need help, you know, and I'm very kind, and you know I am. But I appreciate y'all, but I appreciate Vernon. Without y'all, I wouldn't have what I have right now for my boys. I appreciate y'all. Thank you. There's somebody else here.
All right. The other citizens forum.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Your Honor. Uh, Edward Weaver, 14th Dr. Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Vernon Water Control Authority. We recently have finished a five-year recognition of the treatment facility, uh, which should have only lasted three years. The reason for that was basically the pandemic, COVID, supply chain, all that kind of stuff. But what I really want to do is show, we recently held an appreciation lunch for the staff that went through the facility, a pizza and ice cream cake, to show that we really appreciated their dedication, their perseverance, and their pride in operating the facility for five years. That was under a constant flux of change. Every day was something different. Mr. Grassus, his assistant, Steve Boss, uh, learning new processes, learning new equipment, and their staff was absolutely outstanding during this entire process.
Thank you. Next.
Michael Winkler, 20 Goddard Drive, Vernon, Connecticut. Mayor Champagne, you canceled the August meeting of the Vernon Town Council without explanation. When calls were made to your office, they were told that there was no pressing business, so the August meeting was canceled. First, the mayor cannot cancel a town council meeting except due to weather. Mayor Champagne, you yourself put that single exception in the rules of order. The weather was, on August 19th, was fine, so you violated the rules that you proposed and got adopted by the council. Once the Vernon Town Council approves its meeting schedule, no mayor can change it. Even though it's only an excuse and it doesn't, uh, prevent, um, the fact that it was incorrect to cancel the meeting, the excuse that there was no pending business or pressing business is also incorrect. The Vernon Republican Town Committee submitted a substitute Board of Education committee member in July. That nominee could have been approved at the August meeting. Tax refunds were transmitted to you the first week of August and could have been approved by the council on August 19th. I'm sure people waiting for their refunds would say that was pressing business. Let's speculate on the real reason why you, Mayor Champagne, might have decided to cancel the August Vernon Town Council meeting. The first possibility, you, Mayor Champagne, have prevented a deputy mayor to replace Brian Matola, who resigned from the council. You have prevented a deputy mayor from being elected for months, going so far as to prevent a nomination from the floor in clear violation of the Charter and Robert's Rules of Order. When you figured out that Marianne Leveque would have won as deputy mayor, you apparently decided to not proceed with the election for deputy mayor, even though it was on the agenda and you were in the middle of it, and a motion had already been made and seconded. Or perhaps you couldn't attend the August meeting, and since you prevented a deputy mayor from being elected, you canceled the meeting, and perhaps you did not want to admit why? Because there was no one to run the meeting in your absence because you prevented the filling of the position of deputy mayor for months? Or perhaps, since the council has split six Democrats and six Republicans, perhaps a Republican could not attend the August meeting, and rather than face a Democratic majority, you canceled the meeting for purely partisan political reasons, and perhaps you did not want to admit it? Starting with Mayor Jason McCoy, with the help of town attorneys, mayors have seized more and more power that is not given to them under Vernon's Town Charter. That process continued under Mayor Abel and has accelerated under Mayor Champagne, especially in budgetary transfers. It's like Vernon's slow-motion version of the power grab we see in Washington, DC, which, to my knowledge, no town Republican office holder publicly opposes. I therefore ask Vernon's voters to vote for Democrats for mayor and town council to restore rule by charter and the role of the town council in Vernon. Thank you.
Interesting theories, not correct, but interesting. Next.
Um, Molly Wilson, Rockville High School.
Make sure you get the mic a little close. It's being recorded. I gotta make sure I get the whole thing.
Is that good?
Yep. Name and address.
Uh, Molly Wilson, Rockville High School. Good evening, town council members. My name is Molly Wilson. I'm a proud student and three-sport athlete at Rockville High School. I'm here tonight to talk about the bell that is currently outside of the Historical Society, the bell that should be rightfully returned to Rockville High School. Countless people drive by the bell where it stands today and don't realize the original historical significance that it had at Rockville. In 1967, the bell was introduced to Rockville High School and stood outside our locker room entrance. After all wins in every sport, players, fans, and the band would gather around the bell, and the team would ring it. The tolls of the bell could be heard through the town, and it brought pride and pride to the school and the community. My dad played football at Rockville in the 1990s. I followed in his footsteps and also played football at Rockville, proudly wearing the same numbered jersey that he wore all those years ago. My dad has told me stories about how the bell was very special to him and his teammates. He talks about how proud they were to have it on school grounds. Today, the new players learn the history of the bell before the season even starts. Every fall, our head coach, Coach Knickerbocker, makes sure that we learn the history of our football program. A large part of what we learn surrounds the bell and how it impacted our school. Last year, my teammates and I met with members of the Historical Society, other town officials, our principal, and our superintendent to express our desire to bring the bell back to Rockville. After this impressive collaboration, it seems that we are in agreement about bringing the bell back, but there is still concern regarding if the bell can be moved safely. I hope that we can continue to work together with the help of the town to make sure the bell can and will be transported safely and responsibly. Many of my teammates you may have met with last year have since graduated, but I am here to finish what we started and bring the bell back to the Rock where it belongs. Returning the bell to its original location would not only bring pride to the present and past teams, but it would also reestablish its historical value. Bringing the bell back isn't just about football. It's about honoring tradition, uniting students, and giving our community something to rally around. I would like to thank you all for your time this evening. I hope I have expressed how much bringing back the bell would mean to me, our school, and the community. I look forward to speaking with you soon about our next steps in the process. Thank you again, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Anybody else for citizens forum? That's all right. I understand. Name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the town council. My name is Lester Kalifka, and I stand before you not as a Democrat nor as a Republican, but as a citizen who loves this town, who loves this country. We live in a moment of trial. A nation has not been so divided since the dark days of the Civil War. Too many of our people feel powerless. Too many feel unheard. Too many see the promise of America slipping away. Yet I believe, as I've always believed, that truth is stronger than fear, that justice is stronger than tyranny, and the conscience of the people is still alive. I come here tonight with three urgent concerns. First, the defense of public health. We know the blessings of science. We have seen diseases like polio, measles, and smallpox driven to the brink of extinction because our children were vaccinated, because we cared for one another's health as much as of our own. Yet there are voices today that would undo that process, that would let these old plagues return. I ask you, if mandates are weakened at the federal level, will you act to protect Vernon's children and seniors? Will you join other towns and states to keep the shield of vaccination strong so that no child needs suffer from diseases we already know how to prevent? Second, the use of our military against our own citizens. The Posse Comitatus Act was written to ensure that soldiers would never be turned against their neighbors and that the might of the Army and Marines would never be used as a police force to suppress the people they are sworn to defend. If ever such a call came down to place our streets under military rule, I ask you, will you stand with the people of Vernon? Will you pledge that our police remain accountable to this community, not to the whims of the powers of Washington? Third, and this is kind of long, third, the bond between our federal and state governments. Too often, policies drive a wedge between Washington and our states, between state capitals and our towns. But let us remember, we are not many nations. We are one nation. We are not divided peoples. We are one people. When federal and when federal leaders and state leaders fail to communicate, when they put politics above partnership, it's our communities that suffer. I ask you, will you commit to ensuring that Vernon's voice is heard in both Hartford and Washington? Will you pledge to be a bridge, not a barrier, so that in times of crisis, whether public health, natural disaster, or threats to our democracy, our citizens are not left behind because leaders could not speak with one another and with one voice? For we are bound together in a single destiny. The strength of our town, our state, and our country rests on unity. If one link breaks, the whole chain weakens. But if we stand as one people with one purpose, we will remain strong. Councilmembers, these are not partisan questions. They are moral questions. They are questions of conscience. Do we honor the principles of democracy, or do we surrender to fear? Do we protect the weak, or do we leave them exposed? Do we hold fast to truth, or do we bow to the means? I urge you to stand for justice, stand for compassion, stand for the people of Vernon. If we do this together, then even in this divided time, we will show the community, we will show that community can be stronger than conflict, that truth can outshine deception, and that love of neighbor can guide us forward. Thank you for this moment to share my concerns, and I yield my time so you can share your thoughts with us.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Name and address.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Richard Harrigan. Hello, I'm Betty Circle, and I have a complaint. Um, it has to do with property in my backyard, a bunch of other property that's on Center Road. Every single morning at sunrise, a rooster crows, wakes up the entire neighborhood. Um, and this probably goes on for about a half an hour, waking everybody up. Um, I looked at the Vernon Noise Ordinance. It says, "From 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM," uh, one of the things that is a violation of the noise ordinance is excessive noise from animals. Uh, we've contacted the police several times. They recommended we come to the town council, file a complaint. I'm here. Uh, I'm probably gonna follow back up the police department, and I was just wondering if there's anything we can do. But this has probably been going on for about four months. I don't like chickens, but it's the rooster, and every morning at sunrise. Yeah, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the citizens forum. We're gonna hold off on the, uh, executive session. We're gonna skip down to new business. Number seven.
I'll go ahead and make that motion. Pursuant to Charter.
That year, it's not a...
No.
Hold on a second. Terry, do you want to read it? All right.
Sorry.
Go ahead. She made...
Pursuant to the Charter, Chapter 5, Section 2, entitled, "Prelating Officers, the Town Council Shall Proceed With the Election of the Mayor Pro Tem for the remainder of the 2023-25 Session of the Vernon Town Council."
Seconded by Laura. Okay, I talked to... Terry and I just talked. Basically, the way... She put this in in June for the September meeting. Um, so this was not a... The accusation that was made was wrong, but, uh, Terry and I talked, and she basically, with what she presented, she asked if we could, uh, do the nominations from the floor, um, which the Charter is silent on it. So, because they only talked about the first meeting. So I'm gonna open it for a nomination. Laura.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate John O'Connell as mayor pro temp for the remainder of the 23 to 25 council term.
Second by Jim. Okay. Terry.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Marianne Leveque for the remainder of the year for the mayor pro temp. Second.
Who seconded that? Phyllis. Okay. Any others? All right. We'll go right in order because we, uh, haven't done this before. All right. First, any questions on the procedure? No? All right. We'll start with, uh, with John. All those in favor for John O'Connell? One, two, three, four, five, six. Opposed? I just asked for discussion.
Right. What I heard were, was, are there any questions about the procedure?
Right.
But normally...
I asked if there's any questions about... Yeah.
Normally, there's discussion. Laura should, as the maker of the motion, should get to speak on John's behalf, as should the seconder. Isn't that normal procedure?
Right, and I asked for... And I asked for questions.
Well, I didn't have a question because the expectation is, when someone makes a motion, the maker and the seconder normally just automatically have the option to speak to it.
Well, every time we do this, we ask for questions.
But a question is not the same as the maker of a motion speaking. I mean, she's not gonna question John. She's gonna speak about why she nominated him. That's not the same as questioning the procedure. I mean...
Mr. Mayor, you called a question. We just had a vote of six people that voted in favor of this, and now we're going back and having a debate about a debate. So I think the question has been called and voted upon. I'm gonna agree. I asked for questions. All right. All those opposed?
Excuse me, are... Are we not voting on the two nominees?
We are. We're voting... We're voting for John. That was the first one called. Then we're gonna vote for the next one.
Okay. I'm not familiar with voting for and against in an election. You usually either vote for one candidate or the other. Isn't that what we're gonna do?
We've never done this before because it's always... It's always been done on the first day. It's never been done, never been called any other time.
Well, but...
And there's nothing in the Charter to guide us as to do this.
We have two nominations. I'm... I... It's not... I don't want to vote against John. I want to vote for the candidate that I want to vote for. I mean, it's an election.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. There was a vote called. There were six votes, and now you just said those opposed, and we're somehow having a debate about a debate, which is not... Which is against... We have Robert's Rules of Orders, Robert's Rules of Order, which governs our council agenda. A vote has been called. There is now... You have called for a vote of all those opposed to the motion that was on the floor. I respectfully request that you, that we proceed with that vote as called.
Point of order.
Go ahead.
I would like to see the language in Robert's Rules that governs us. If there is no language in the Charter or our own rules about how to connect...
Falls under Robert's Rules, but it's not... It's... He's not... The question is, is the motion was called. We did questions. The motion was called, and now we're backtracking to questions again.
You have two candidates.
I will happily cite the... I will, in response to my colleague's question, I will happily cite to the section of Robert's Rules of Order. It's Section 66, Nominations and Elections, and I will quote, "Before proceeding to an election to fill an office, it is customary to nominate one or more candidates. The nomination is not necessary when the election is by ballot or roll call, as each member may vote for any eligible person, whether nominated or not. When the vote is via voce or by rising, the nomination is like a motion to fill a blank. The different names being repeated by the chairs they have made, and then the vote is taken on each order in which they were nominated until one is elected. The nomination need not be seconded."
The nomination need not be seconded." So the nominee, again, I will say, "The vote is taken on each in order in which they were nominated until one is elected." So I would, respectfully, I was nominated by Laura. We have just taken the vote on me, and I have six votes in favor, and now we're going to have a vote against me.
Do you have a point of order?
Just personal to what we just heard. I, I don't, the thing is, I think the next thing should not be to vote against John. The next thing should be who's in favor of Mary Ann. And that's consistent with what he just read. You call the names of the candidates in order, and people vote for the candidate of their choice. That's, that was, that was what I was referring to in my, in my previous comment.
And I understand what you're saying, but we have to do the, we have to do each vote one at a time.
But, no, it's, it's all one vote. We have two candidates nominated. Everybody votes for one of them. It's not two separate actions. It's one action. It's an election. And that's consistent with what we just heard.
So you want to vote for the, for John and vote for Mary Ann, but not vote against each one?
That's correct. And you'll count up the votes, and whoever has the most votes will, will win. And if it's a tie, you will cast the deciding vote. That's an election.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, hold on. I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. Go ahead with the point of order.
Point of order, we follow Robert's Rules.
I understand that.
And Robert's Rules state what John read. And that's how we're proceeding because we all agreed that that is what we're going to use.
Okay, well, well, hold on a second. I mean, we've already been down this road once. And, and because we've never done this before, you know, we, we run into these problems. Do you have a point of order?
Roll call vote. I'm calling for a roll call vote.
Okay. Well, we're, the problem is, we're already in, in the middle of it. So we may, we may have to back. Give me two seconds to go talk to.
All right.
You know, we always think we, we've been doing this a long time. We, we, we think we understand which directions we go and, and how things run. But you always run into these new things, no matter what you do in government. So what I ask simply is if we can vote for one, vote for the other and not vote against. Because either way, I think it's going to all come out the same. Okay? So I think that's the way we'll do it. I'm going to start the vote, I'm going to start it over again. All those in favor for John? Go with it. Six. All those in favor of Mary Ann? Six. I will break the tie for John. All right? All right. All right. Grab your name tags, guys. All right, I'm going to go to presentations of administration. I'm going to start with the chief. Chief, come on up.
Are you, Mr. Mayor? Good evening. As I've started to do for the past year, I just want to take the opportunity to introduce the council and to the community in general, our newest officers that come on board at our department. So I'd like to introduce to you Officer Johnny Garen. Johnny is truly one of our hometown grown, born and raised here in Vernon, Rockville High School class in 2020. Worked locally, local to some establishments here in town, including GNC over in Tri-City Plaza and Dunkin' Donut, which is not going to have any jokes about why he came into our profession. And also with his father, who is the proud owner of Pro Flight Aerial Media. He applied to our department April 1st of 2024, hired on September 23rd, graduated on March 26th of this year, and completed his field training with us on July 21st. Since that time, he's been working full-time with us, filling our roles, and doing a phenomenal job with us. So please join me in welcoming Officer Johnny Garen.
Welcome aboard.
Well, welcome.
All right, now I have a proclamation for the, the Daughters of the American Revolution, declaring September 17th to the 23rd, 2025 Constitution Week in the town of Vernon. So we can face the television. So I'm going to start with the proclamation that I'm going to give them a chance to speak. It says, "Mayor proclamation, whereas the Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress in 1955, set aside a week every September dedicated to the observance of Constitution Week. And whereas August 2nd, 1956, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed Public Law Number 915 honoring the Daughters of the American Revolution's petition. And whereas the celebration emphasizes the DAR's three important messages, it is all citizens' responsibilities to protect, defend, and preserve the Constitution of the United States. Number two, teaches us to be mindful of the foundation of the American way of life. And finally, number three, encourages the study of historical events. And whereas the town, the Vernon Town Council encourages our citizens to take time in September to reflect upon the freedoms we enjoy each day. Now therefore, I, Daniel A. Champagne, Mayor, together with the Vernon Town Council on behalf of the town of Vernon, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th, 2025 to September 23rd, 2025, Constitution Week in the town of Vernon, and do hereby present this mayor proclamation to the Daughters of the American Revolution, the 16th day of We're going to give you an opportunity.
Well, during these very important times in our country, the Constitution is as important as ever on behalf of my chapter and all of the NSDAR. I thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to talk?
I just want to say that it's a wonderful organization. We do a lot looking into the history, the Constitution, and our forefathers. And if any of you have females in your group that do have ancestors that fought in the American Revolution, we welcome them to our meetings.
Thank you. Is it this year or next year? This is your 50th anniversary? Well, congratulations, happy birthday. All righty. I have a couple things for my announcements. All right, upcoming events. September 20th, 11:00 AM is the wait-down for ET 241 at Burt Street Firehouse. Everybody's welcome. If you've never seen a fire truck that's being christened, it's, it's interesting. You should stop down. Sept- September 23rd, 3:00 to 7:00 PM is the open house and ribbon cutting for Citizens Block. Private tour with the mayor for the council begins at 2:00 PM. So if you guys want, I'll walk you through at 2:00, just for the council. September 25th, 3:00 to 7:00 PM is the job fair at Vernon Center Middle School. If you have anybody that's not employed, please steer them down to the middle school. And upcoming updates on previous events. The dedication of the softball field and bench for Steve Kryeski was a well-attended event. Lots of stories shared about, about crash, and family was most appreciative. And I think we had a good showing of the council there, too. Many of us have grown up with Steve. The Thursday night concert series in Farmer's Market attendees appreciated the opportunity to shop the Farmer's Market and enjoy the music provided by very talented musicians. The event grows bigger and more popular every year. National Night Out. This National Night, National, the National Night Out event was very well-attended. The entire St. Vernon's parking lot and terrace were full of all kinds of activities and vendors. One very popular item was the dunk tank. Chief, you were in that, right? That was a long line. This event is held annually on the first Tuesday of August. If you've never been to one, I recommend stopping by next year. And item of interest, the audit is complete and will be printed and distributed to the town council as soon as, as soon as possible. All hands on deck on that one. All right.
Excuse me, Dan. Point of personal privilege, please. I just want to.
Did I miss an event?
I just want to make you aware that September 3rd is, 23rd, is Rosh Hashanah, one of the most holy days. I know you're aware of the significance of the holiday. But we are doing ribbon cutting on Citizens Block that could be done any day. And I'm disappointed that it is being done on a day where Jews will all be in prayer.
Oh, sorry to hear that. Let's move on to consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move, move passage of the consent agenda as agreed to.
Second.
Seconded by Laura. Are we pulling any of them? No? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Right, new business number one.
New business number one, resolve the Vernon Town Council hereby endorses the nomination of Connor Yanicki, 1100 Hartford Turnpike, Apartment 702, Vernon, Connecticut, to replace and complete the term vacated by Patricia Buxton. Said term to commence September 17th, 2025, and expires November 10th, 2025.
Second.
Seconded by Laura. Connor, you want to come on up and say, say a word or two before we get going?
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, and thank you to my lovely town committee and Patricia herself for getting me involved in that town committee and ultimately getting me to run into 2023 and also 2025 election cycle for Board of Ed. I've been living in the town for quite a while and grew up in the area, and I hope to keep the schools and the community as strong and as well-rounded as they are for when my children ultimately go through the education system. So once again, thank you for the opportunity and look forward to working with the Board of Education.
All right, questions? No? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. John, business number two?
New business number two, the town council hereby approves the disposal of fixed assets for the data processing department as disclosed on the fixed asset disposal request forms.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. And just so anybody knows, anything going out of IT, we remove all the hard drives and they're destroyed. So if anybody's going to ask that question. All right, any questions? All those in favor? Unanimous. John?
New business number three, the town council hereby approves the disposal of fixed assets for the Board of Education as disclosed on the fixed asset disposal request forms.
Second.
Seconded by Laura. Any questions? No? All those in favor? Unanimous. Number four?
New business number four, the town council hereby approves the agreement entitled Vernon-Ellington Intermunicipal Sewer Agreement as presented.
Seconded by Mike. Rob, can you just give us a quick brief on what, what this is doing?
Sure. Good evening. The town of Vernon has intermunicipal agreements with all the towns that convey sewer flow to our treatment plant. And so Ellington has one where it's outlined that how we build Ellington is through Connecticut Water Ports. And with Ellington growing, the way they're growing, we actually have to keep a separate database and add all those new additions to it. They have about 2,700 properties that are connected, and it's been really troublesome to try to keep that thing updated and accurate. So we, the Vernon WPCA asked the Ellington WPCA if we could modify this agreement so we could actually just fill off of the flows that are coming through the Ellington pump station. It's already metered, and it actually is more accurate of what is flowing into the Vernon plant. So Ellington agreed, and so the Vernon WPCA also approved it. They went through the town attorney and the Ellington town attorney. And what you have before you is the finished document for your approval.
All right, questions? Mary?
I'm figuring it's going to be a higher usage that we're seeing because of the fact that Ellington still is on a lot of wells.
Yes, well, it's actually going to be actual flow because the metered flow that we got from Ellington is basically a flat rate. So we actually get the, the precise flow that we're treating.
So it kind of benefits us a little more. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All those in favor? Unanimous. John?
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne to execute a memorandum of agreement on behalf of the town of Vernon with the State of Connecticut Homeland Security Department relative to the fiscal year '24 State Homeland Security Grant Program, and further agrees to be the custodial owner of regional assets.
Terry, seconded by Terry. This is the annual agreement. If you, it's everything that, that's part of the grant is listed in. Has everybody read that? It's an extensive list. All right, any questions on this? I'll answer the best I can. Yes.
Thank you. I think that I know the answer, but I want to be sure, does this in any way affect the way we do or do not interact with ICE?
No. Well, hold on a second. Let me get to the, the Homeland Security incorporates basically anything that deals with any of our security issues. Okay? They may interact with ICE, but not in the way you're thinking. So we may get intelligence from ICE, but we don't talk to ICE about where people are. Okay?
Yeah, I was just looking to see if there was a change.
Right, this is, this is mainly an intelligence thing, okay? That I've worked with them when I was a policeman. All right, any questions? Be on that. No? All right, all those in favor? John?
New business number six, Mr. Mayor, the town council, consistent with the town of Vernon personnel rules and regulations, section 4.1 per N.B., quote, "Job descriptions," hereby adopts the job descriptions of chief medical officer, budget analyst, and program and prevention coordinator.
Mike? No, Jim, seconded by Jim. What's that? You know what? I don't know what's going on with these. That's not working tonight or something. All right. Don, why don't you? Alright, Don, why don't you, um, you wanna go through these and kinda give us the update?
Sure, through the mayor. Uh, the first position is the Chief Medical Officer. Uh, there were really no changes in this job description, other than the wage classification, which brings it in line with other department heads that we have at that level.
I'm sorry. Basically, when you're seeing these, we take the, it's the average across the state for those job titles, that's where we're getting this from, uh, and the ranges, and if we don't keep up with those, we could lose employees because they're, they're poaching all, all the time. Alright, just so everybody understands the basis of what, what we're doing here today with these three, three positions. I'm sorry, Donna, cut you off.
Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, the next one is the Budget Analyst, and working in conjunction with the Finance Officer. Uh, the changes in yellow were recommended to update, uh, the position to what the employee is performing for the essential job functions, and, uh, also the knowledge, skills, and abilities, and along with that, reclassifying the wages for that position as well to align with, uh, Department of Labor averages.
Okay. Um, now, just to understand, when, when you're looking at the ranges, when somebody's moving from their current position to the next position, they don't automatically, if they're at the highest level, which three of the positions are, or two of the positions are at their highest level, it doesn't automatically go to the highest level on the next one, it's a five, it's a, it's a five percent, which gives us four more, four to five more years of growth in those positions. So they'll, they'll, hopefully, we're gonna keep them for the next five years, each one of those positions, or longer. That's, that's the hope of this. Questions? Billis?
Thank you. Makes a lot of sense, but I am wondering about the budgetary, the budgetary impact, not, not position by position, but a total of the budgetary impact, and where will that funding come from?
Okay, so the, the, we have a lot of unfilled positions that we've been trying to fill, that, so that, that, those accounts have money in them, and the, again, they're not going, it's not a, two of these positions, it's, it's, actually, all three of them are not jumping by ten thousand dollars, they're jumping by about three or four, so we're probably talking about ten thousand dollars here, and we have the money from those open positions, and it'll be in the budget for next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
John?
Uh, new business number eight, uh, the town council hereby waives a portion of the fees owed in excess of six thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars for the work associated with the building permit for the St. John's Episcopal Church Handicapped Accessibility Project as presented. Additional fees would apply for any additional work.
Seconded by Jim. Alright, I think we've gone most, I think everybody here's been through the, one of these before. Basically, we, for the nonprofits, we go down and we actually find out what the actual cost is and what we have to pay to the state, which is the six thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars, and then we, we, as a council, can decide if we're going to waive the rest of that, that, uh, building fee. Questions? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne to execute the necessary paperwork to make application for and receive local prevention council grant funds in the amount of five thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars.
Second.
Seconded by Laura. Hello, Michelle?
Hello, there.
Would you like to give us a little update on the, the grant this year?
Yes, please. Can you hear me? This is, can you hear me? Okay? Okay. So through the mayor, uh, the local prevention council is a grant that we apply for and receive every year. Um, it supports, um, the strengthening and the activities of the Vernon Rocks Coalition, which is our local prevention council. Um, the priority substance for us, um, is vaping tobacco, and, um, some of the activities supported by this grant include, um, uh, uh, tobacco compliance checks, so that's how we reduce access for kids, um, community events such as our drug takeback events and our community block party event where we share information and resources, um, classroom vaping presentations, um, to the health classes at RHS, and we provide vaping cessation kits, um, and it also supports continued training for our coalition members.
Thank you. Questions? Terry?
Hi, thank you, Michelle. So just a quick question, um, what is the amount of the grant for? How much is the grant for?
Through the mayor, it's five, five thousand three hundred and forty-two.
There's an error?
The motion? So I just wanna make sure we have the correct amount.
What was the amount, Michelle?
It's five thousand three hundred and forty-two.
Alright, John, can you just change the number in the motion?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne to execute the necessary paperwork to make application for and receive local prevention council grant funds in the amount of five thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars.
No? Did you second it the first time? Alright, seconded again by Laura. You guys, do you guys have that one? Okay. Good catch. Terry, you, you all done? You all set?
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Hi, thank you. Hi, Michelle. Um, are you only working in prevention for the tobacco cessation, or, because now marijuana is now in vapes, are you guys gonna spend any of that on that? Because they look the same, like you can't tell a marijuana vape from a tobacco vape.
Through the mayor, we, so this funding is really focused on vaping prevention, but it's combined with other funding, and we share information about the cannabis prevention, all of it. So it's, it's the focus of tobacco, but we include the cannabis as well.
Okay, so just vaping, period?
Yes.
Just total, okay.
Alright, anybody else? No? Alright, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Michelle. Let's do the, no, let's do the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, the town council waives the reading of the minutes of the regular town council meeting of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and that minutes of said meeting be approved.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Alright, do we have any corrections or deletions on the minutes?
Sorry to be that guy, but can I please ask, the I is taken out of Jesse in the, in the minutes?
What'd you say?
Can I please ask, the I be taken out of Jesse?
Misspelled, they misspelled his name, I guess. They misspelled your name again.
They did. Got the last name right, though.
You'd think that'd be the hard one. Well, you know what, maybe they're doing it to make sure you're reading it. Did you guys get that? Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's alright. Anybody else? Alright, all those in favor? Unanimous. Hope to see if the, uh, if it happens any other times, hopefully not. Alright, let's move back. No? We're going back to executive session.
Mr. Mayor, the town council, pursuant to the authority given in Connecticut General Statutes one dash two hundred, per N six, per N B, hereby moves to go into executive session to discuss the tentative settlement relative to workers' compensation claim Sinar Yagtu versus the town of Vernon, Vernon and the Board of Education, claim number A zero four nine one zero, and invites John W. Kleinhands, Town Administrator, and William Mayer, Director of Business and Finance, to attend.
Second.
Seconded by Terry. Alright, uh, all those in favor? Unanimous. Alright, guys, we're gonna leave and discuss this, and, uh, really, nothing else is gonna come up. Alright. John?
Uh, so, Mr. Mayor, uh, the town council hereby agrees to the full and final settlement as presented in the matter of Sinar Yagtu versus the town of Vernon and the Board of Education, claim number two zero four nine one zero. To resolve said claim, once the settlement is executed, it will become public.
Seconded by Mike? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous.